Session of the Durham County Board of Commissioners. On this Monday, this cold Monday, December 8th. It is great to see so many people come out with us through this weather. I will start our meeting by reading our public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the board and fellow residents. At any time should any member of the board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such a time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you read our land acknowledgement?
Yes. Land acknowledgement. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous people from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Valentine, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you very much for that. Next item on our agenda is agenda adjustments or changes. Are there any adjustments to our agenda? Okay, see, no, no, I'll accept the, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda.
So, second.
Has been moved and probably seconded that we accept the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. The agenda passes without amendments. Next item on our agenda are the announcements. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. Durham County invites everyone to join us for the 2025 Innovate Durham Demo Date on Thursday, December 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the American Underground located at 201 West Main Street. Innovate Durham turns Durham County into a lab for innovation where local entrepreneurs test new ideas and solutions that improve the community. You can register and there is a link available. Join the Durham Soil and Water Conservation District for a breakfast and discussion on farm law with Andrew Bronnen. We will discuss liability, trespassing, I'm sorry, and more. Breakfast begins at 8:00 a.m. and the presentation begins at 8:30. The event is on Thursday, December 18th, at Farm Bureau Office located at 1901 Hillendale Road, and there is a link for registration. The Welcome Baby 13th Annual Winter Coat Drive continues through January 9th, 2026. The Welcome Baby team collects new and gently-used children's coats, hats, gloves, and scarves in sizes newborn to eight years old. Donate at 721 Foster Street during normal hours in other locations throughout the community. You can find out additional information by visiting welcomebaby.org. The Durham County Tax Administration allows residents the option of making partial payments on real property taxes through January 5th, 2026. Payment may be made by check, bank draft, money order, cash, or online, and there is a link. No payment plans will be extended once bills become delinquent after January 5th, 2026. Property owners may visit dconc.gov backslash tax or call 560-0300 for additional information. Starting December 10th, the Durham County Department of Social Services will begin taking applications for the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, LIEAP. Applicants aged 60 and older who receive services through DCO DSS, Aging, and Adult Services are eligible to apply, as well as those with disabilities and those who receive food and nutrition services. On January 2nd, 2026, all Durham County residents may apply online, and there is a link. Paper applications are also available at 414 East Main Street, and virtual appointments are available with the specialists by calling 919-560-8192. The program ends on March 31st, 2026, or while funds remain. And lastly, the Durham County offices will be closed for the winter holiday on the following dates, Wednesday, December 24th, through Friday, December 26th, reopening on Monday, December 29th, as well as Thursday, January 1st, reopening on Friday, January 2nd. You can visit our website, dconc.gov for additional information. That concludes the announcements in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other announcements from the Commissioners? Well, I would like to send congratulations to Habitat for Humanity. They had a gala on, I'm getting my days mixed up, it must have been Thursday. Yeah, me and Manager Hager were there, and they were celebrating their 40, this was their first gala, but it was a celebration of their 40th year. And part of the celebration was the celebration of them about to finish their 500th house, their building, the house. And that's just great. I just want to congratulate former Commissioner and now CEO of Habitat for Humanity in Durham, Naimashina Burns, for her organization and what they're doing, and a wonderful gala it was. I really appreciated the program and I appreciated the event, and just a congratulations to them for their 40th year and 500th house here in Durham. That are, that's a lot of houses, so congratulations to them. Any others? No? Okay. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our work, to approve the November 3rd, 2025 work session, and November 24th, 2025 regular session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the four stated minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, please use the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda are our ceremonial items. The first one is the introduction of our new county, Durham County Memorial Stadium Manager, Jamal White. And they're making their way to the podium.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening.
I wanted to provide you some insight with regards to the selection that was made with regards to the stadium manager. We had three members of the stadium authority actually participating in the interview process and selection process. That included Yvonne Coleman, who's the deputy chair, Derek McGee, and Jonathan Leach, as well as the acting stadium manager, which was Sean Swetaka, who is my Assistant Director of Building Services, and the staff member Jacob Howell, who participated in the interview process, as well as the supervisor for the stadium manager, Crystal Thomas. She will introduce to you Mr. Jamal White.
Thank you, Montreal. Good evening, Chairman Lee, members of the board, county manager, county attorney, executive leadership, and our in-person and virtual audience. My name is Crystal Thomas. I'm the Deputy Director of General Services. This evening, I am pleased to introduce the new Durham County Memorial Stadium Manager, Mr. Jamal White. Jamal began his role on November 10th, 2025. He is a graduate of the University of Bridgeport with a Bachelor's of Science and Business Management, and of Manhattanville College with a Master of Science in Sports Management. Jamal brings years of experience, most recently serving at Duke University as the Senior Assistant Director of Athletics Facilities and Projects. His background also includes leadership roles at Longwood University as the Director of Athletic Events, and the University of Bridgeport, in which he was the Assistant Athletic Director for game day operations and facilities. Jamal's first major event as the stadium manager was the CIAA Football Championship Game on November 15th, 2025, which included over 6,000 attendees. He took the lead and guided the general services team to a very successful game day without any incident. Jamal exemplifies the general services spirit of enthusiasm and eagerness to work, to get it done, and make it happen. With his leadership and with the support of the Durham County Stadium Authority Board, the Board of County Commissioners, Durham County Government, our community partners, and the residents and visitors of Durham, Jamal will continue the excellent work of growing and advancing the stadium as a positive asset for our county. The general services team would also like to recognize and thank Assistant Director Sean Swetaka for serving as the interim stadium manager for two months while a search was underway for the new manager, and Event Coordinator Preston Jacob Howell for stepping up to help manage the scheduled events. I would like to now present you, Mr. Jamal White.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to say thank you to Montreal and Crystal for giving me this opportunity. A little nervous, but just want to say, just thank you for the opportunity, looking forward to working with everybody, and looking forward to a successful job, I should say. Uh, sorry. Our next event will be, this coming Saturday, we'll be hosting the state football championships. We'll have two games on Saturday from 2:00, and the second game will be at 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mr. White. Welcome to Durham County, and we look forward to working with you. Definitely look forward to working with you. Wendy?
I just wanted to make a comment. Welcome, Jamal. We are so excited for you to be here with us. I had the opportunity to meet Jamal his first week of work at the CIAA Conference. I had the honor of doing the coin toss, which I had never done anything like that before. And Marcus Manning, the Director of our Sports Commission, called Jamal over, and I was like, wow, how, nice to meet you. How long have you been here? And he was like, this is my first week. So, I just, and he was so calm, absolutely calm, totally confident, and just had it all under control. So, you really had baptism by fire coming right into like our biggest event and having it be successful, so thank you. And I also want to shout out to the general services staff who I saw there, excuse me, who I saw there that day also working really hard to make sure it was a successful event. Thank you.
Vice Chair alone.
Mr. White, congratulations. Really excited to have you joining the team, and I'm excited to get to work with you and Mo and the entire team as the liaison for the stadium authority. Really excited to see all the new and fresh ideas that you're going to be able to bring for us for the programs we already have at the stadium, but I know you bring a lot of knowledge from your experience. a lot of knowledge from your experience at Duke, especially that will really benefit our community and our youth as we try to create more spaces for them to engage. So excited to have you on board.
Commissioner Burton.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lee. Yes, I just want to say, you know, welcome to Durham County. I wasn't able to come to the CIAA Championship Game, but I drove out there, I had a previous event, and when I was out there, I was like, oh my goodness, all these people are out here. You know, the traffic was like really, really backed up, and so I'm looking forward to working with you, learning more about sports management, because I know that's an integral part of Durham County Government, making sure the Memorial Stadium is used, and we're bringing in people, and also having activities for young people, like Vice Chair Alom said, so welcome.
Commissioner Valentine.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. White, welcome to Durham County. We are looking forward to your excellence, and as noted by Commissioner Alom, your innovation that you're going to bring to your new role here in Durham County. I want you to know that you're coming to the greatest county here in North Carolina, no pressure, but we welcome you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, in our agenda, the next item we actually had for our ceremonial items, we're actually going to delay until next, next meeting because of, it was the proclamation for recognizing Bull's Academy Life Sciences Day, and because of implement weather, the students couldn't be here, so we're going to delay that, okay? So I think there's, it shows on some agendas, not because of the late nature of it, so I just wanted to make note of it, okay? Okay, so our next agenda item is a resolution for Together for Resilient Youth, twenty-fifth anniversary. Now, this was just for acknowledgement, however, we have Dr. Wanda Page in the audience, and I'm going to allow-
Dr. Wanda Boone.
What did I say, Paige? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Charge it to my mind, not my heart. You know I know who you are, you know that. She's here in the audience, and I'm going to allow Commissioner Valentine to read it, and we'll have comments afterwards, if that's okay with our commissioners. Commissioner Valentine.
Thank you, Chair. So the Durham Board of County Commissioners Resolution Recognizing Together for Resilient Youth, TRI, for its leadership in substance use prevention and community resilience. So whereas Together for Resilient Youth, founded in Durham County in two thousand, has worked tirelessly to prevent substance misuse and promote resilience among youth, families, and communities. And whereas since two thousand and seven, TRI has partnered with Durham Public Schools and the broader community to reach more than thirty-seven hundred students annually through assemblies, classroom engagement, and community-based programming. And whereas TRI has prioritized prevention of opioid overdose, alcohol misuse, particularly among Black communities disproportionately impacted by these public health crises. And whereas, since two thousand and fifteen, TRI has supplied Nuloxone to all school resource officers in middle and high schools, ensuring rapid overdose response capacity in youth-centered spaces until such time as Nuloxone became available directly through the county. And whereas TRI purchased and installed medication drop boxes that has participated in Operation Medicine Drop since its inception, supporting the safe disposal of unused prescriptions and reducing access to opioids in homes, and whereas, between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-five, TRI directly engaged over fifty thousand individuals through training, support services, and coalition work, and reached an additional twenty-three thousand four hundred and forty through speaking engagements across North Carolina and the United States. And whereas TRI's Health Ambassador Program has trained and empowered fifty-one community members, including youth, young adults, adults, and seniors, resulting in confirmed lifesaving interventions and the distribution of more than fifteen hundred Nuloxone kits to date. And whereas TRI has developed and disseminated prevention resources, including an opioid misuse and overdose prevention guide, the Resilient Recovery Community Training Guide, marijuana and youth mental health curriculum, vaping prevention training, and the LIFT Program for student ages nine through seventeen, and separately for youth in the juvenile justice system. And whereas TRI's work embodies the values of prevention, dignity, equity, and legacy, ensuring that families and communities, especially those most impacted, are equipped with the knowledge, resources, and resilience. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Together for Resilient Youth for its outstanding leadership in substance use prevention, its commitment to equity and community resilience, and its enduring impact on the lives of thousands of residents across Durham County, North Carolina, and the nation, this eighth day of July, or this eighth day of December, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-five, July. Don't we wish. Sign, Dr. Mike Lee, Chair. Night Alom, Vice Chair. Michelle Burton, Commissioner. Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner. Stephen J. Valentine, Commissioner. At this time, Dr. Wanda Boone, would you approach the microphone to accept the resolution? Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Wanda Boone, CEO.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, commissioners, chair, vice chairs. What a long time it's been. You know, when I think about and look back over twenty-five years, and especially when I think about the youth, some of whom are still with us, who started with us at age fourteen. We had a young person on our Zoom call last night who said, well, you know I'm going to be thirty years old. I'm like, okay, so we're the same age, that can't be. But it's been a pleasure and a joy. What I've handed out is the Community Resource Guide, and it looks a little different, it feels a little different, because it was actually designed and developed by and with the community. So, and it has to do with opioid prevention, the prevention of overdoses, because Durham is the only county in North Carolina that has more overdoses among Black people than any other ethnicity. And so I found that out, actually, in two thousand and fifteen, and so we've worked very hard to decrease that number. And so people ask me, well, you've been around for twenty-five years, how come nothing has changed? But a lot has changed, and if you remember what things were like in the past, and what they're like today, there are things that are different. The internet is different, and the challenges that young people face, that we all face, are different. And so we look at substance use prevention from the eyes of those who can let us know what's happening. For example, we talk about vaping, and we know that that is a serious challenge among young people today. And so to approach them and say, don't vape, doesn't work, just like it never worked with any other substance. But what we found out is that the reason that they vape is because of stress, of course, and things like that, but also because there are games online that are called vape games. Oh, yes, I know. And so because they trust us and the mentors that we have, then they tell us exactly what's going on, so that we know how to better equip young people with the things that they need, peer to peer. That's the other thing. It's not the adults that talk down to young people, or young adults, or adults, or those who are much younger than I am at this point, but we rely on health ambassadors to be the spokespeople for whatever the challenge is that we are attempting to solve. So we talk about violence and bullying and prevention of those things. Interpersonal violence is actually the leading cause of homicide, and even though gun violence among youth, it's so, so, so important, there are other forms of violence that we have to address as well. So there's lots going on, that's why we have a coalition, and the coalition helps to develop what we work on based on data. One of the reasons that there are more overdoses among Black people than any other ethnicity is because some people are taking prescription medications with alcohol. And so we found that out by going to the epidemiologists in, at the state level, and we brought that back to the powers that be, and we continue to talk about alcohol, and how not to take prescription medications with alcohol, and some other things that we're working on that are unique to the individuals here in Durham. And so we're excited about the twenty-five years. Lastly, I just want to say that I was looking at some data and information that's on the county health department's website, which I'm really excited about, but there wasn't anything about TRI. It's going to be on there, because there's going to be a link, but one of the things that you'll see, hopefully that you'll see, has to do with all the things that we're doing in terms of harm reduction and Nuloxone. Fifteen hundred Nuloxone kits have been provided to people in Durham over June, July, August, September, October, November. It's huge, and that's because our health ambassadors are going out there to do that work. So there's a lot more I could say, I do want to say that I am co-founder with my husband, Earl. So Earl Boone, raise your hand, I couldn't do anything without you. So thank you so much, it's such an honor to have the resolution and to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again, and thank you, Dr. Wanda Boone. We'll go to comments, yeah. And so Commissioner Burton.
Yes, Dr. Boone, you and your husband are such an inspiration. I'm so grateful that you all are here in Durham County doing this very, very important work. Congratulations on being in service for twenty-five years, and I am glad that you gave us this, because I'm a reader, and it helps me to better understand what the situation is, and as, you know, I've been a commissioner now for a year, and just working with you, really understanding this issue around substance abuse, and trying to keep young people away from substances, drugs, alcohol, et cetera. So, and also I just want to acknowledge you when we worked together on the DPS CIP Task Force, and I really enjoyed the way that you were very cognizant about the spaces that our young people should be in, so they don't have, you know, anxiety, and they're warming and welcoming, just the care and the, the love that you exuberate. So thank you to your husband, to you, for doing this really important work, and I'm going to be getting with you, because I want to learn more, and I know Wendy, Commissioner Jacobs, works with you a lot, because I think this is something that we have to get a hold of here in our county, so thank you so much.
Commissioner Valentine.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Boone, thank you for continuing to labor in the vineyard for the last twenty-five years, and in many instances, without any fanfare, you continue to show up, you and your husband, Mr. Earl, and you do the work. And in other spaces where people can't see you, you're always providing the relevant data. You tell the story, you make a difference, and your impact is felt in our community, and so continue to show up, continue to show up for our, our community, so thank you.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Boone, and Earl, as well, for you are always there, supporting everything that your wife is doing, it's really, also your relationship is inspiring, your partnership. I just want to thank you, because twenty-five years, and you have not lost your spark and your commitment to this work. I have learned a lot from you, we've worked together very closely since two thousand and seventeen, I think is when we started Durham Joins Together, and I want to acknowledge that also Durham TRI was really sounding the alarm about a number of issues before it really even became known. For instance, I remember probably about thirteen years ago, I went to a convening that you had with a lot of religious leaders, and it was talking about trauma and ACES, and nobody was talking about that. And of course now, we are doing, you know, we have, it's imbued in, in what we do in Durham County Government. So I also want to acknowledge, it's not in the, we can't have everything in the resolution, but your work around really introducing the whole Durham County Government and the whole Durham community to resilience, which I think is really one of the underlying philosophies of Durham TRI. I also want to acknowledge the huge amount of resources that you have brought into Durham. I, it would be interesting to know, just even in terms of the grant funding, over many, many years that you have brought into, into our community. And then some of the other efforts, again, that's not even mentioned on here, the work that you have done with a lot of the stores, the whole campaign to educate the owners about products they were selling, that were also marketing to youth, and educating the community about things that are dangerous. So again, we have all learned so much from you, and I know for, for me, working with you as co-chairs of Durham Joins Together to save lives, even the whole idea of the collective impact model, again, that is something that you, you know, these are systemic types of approaches and issues, so again, thank you for everything that you've done, the focus on data and science, again, is, is really invaluable, and you have saved lives, for sure, in our community, and that's what it really gets down to. So I hope you're all in for another twenty-five years, and congratulations.
Commissioner Alom.
Dr. Boone, thank you so much for your tireless work, especially, I think, you know, you've been working on this for twenty-five years, but I think what's really, really important is that period, especially during the peak of COVID, where you didn't let this work just stop, because that was a time period where obviously everything was shutting down, a lot of people were cut off from resources and support, and the work that you were doing continued on, and you made sure that our residents and neighbors that needed this support the most continued to have it, and I think it's so, so important to have leaders like you who don't forget our neighbors, just when like everything else is in flusters, all of us had things going on, and we're like struggling with the pandemic, but you continued to champion opioid prevention, opioid overdose prevention and education, so thank you so much for that, and thank you for doing this work. I know we're giving you praise now, but for twenty-five years, you've been doing it silently, and I know that after today, you'll continue going on doing it without praise, so while you're here, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And lastly, I'll say, Dr. Boone, our, we've intersected a few times throughout the last, say, fifteen years or so, and I just appreciate, I'm going to echo something that Commissioner Jacobs said, that, and I've always believed this, that you knew what Durham and Durham Public Schools and- always believed this, that you knew what Durham and Durham Public Schools and we need to hear before we knew. I can remember the conversations that, the things you were saying about what kids need before the administration in Durham Public Schools even knew about them. So your work is deeply important and is very, very much appreciated. So thank you for everything that you've done, continue to do and will do for not only Durham, but just surrounding areas, state and so forth. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Your comments mean more to me than I could ever express. And yes, I'm gonna go back underground now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next section of our agenda is the consent agenda and we're gonna need to up top, take two off because we have public comment for two of the consent agenda items. The first one is the 250554, the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 26 BCC 023, has to do with Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And then the 250601, which is Budget Ordinance Number BCC 038, reckon, for the community donations from Carolina Arbor's Community. Okay? So in order for us to do the public comment, we have to take it off of consent and then we'll, we'll vote on those separately. Outside of those, we have the consent agenda for approval. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
A second.
All right. So it's been properly moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda with the exception of 250554 and 250601. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to make a comment on one item after we approve the agenda or I just want something.
Okay. Okay, we can do that. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, please use the same sign. The consent agenda passes as amended. Commissioner Jacobs.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge the item in our agenda related to the federal railroad, it's item 25-0632, the, the Easterham Railroad Crossing Study. I just want to acknowledge it because I think it's really significant for, first of all, I want to thank our staff for getting this federal grant, but also it is significant that we are moving forward with this study. This is, aligns with Vision Zero, the Vision Zero Goals to Improve Pedestrian Bike and, and every type of safety for our residents, but also it aligns with the work that we're doing to advance passenger rail in our region. And we are taking an incremental approach as a region and this is one of the strategies, which is to try to make improvements in the corridor and try to go after federal funding when it's available. And doing this study is the first step for then applying for federal funding to implement any, any recommendations that come out of this. And I also want to just thank our local media because this issue of the fatalities here at Driver and Plum and Ellis have been something that has been covered over and over again by our local media. It's a serious issue and I'm really grateful that we are now in a position to really try to move forward and address this problem. And so I just want to acknowledge and thank our staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there further comments? Okay, we'll move on. Our next section in our agenda are public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight and we will proceed with the first. So the first public hearing that we have is 250608, is a public hearing and award of ambulance franchise to provide non-emergency ambulance services in Durham County. I'll invite the, our EMS director, brand new EMS director, up to explain what the purpose and requirements are and you'll, and an overview, recommendations. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Manager Hager, County Leadership colleagues and members of the public. My name is Seth Kamansky. I serve as your chief for Durham County EMS. Thank you for all being here today and for your continued engagement in the health and safety of our community. This public hearing is being held in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A-250, which authorizes counties to franchise ambulance services and requires public hearing as part of that process. Additionally, this hearing is conducted under the authority of Durham County, County's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, which governs emergency medical services and ambulance operations within the county. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the applicants who have applied for a franchise to provide non-emergency ambulance transport services in Durham County. These applicants have met the minimum requirements outlined in our ordinance and have submitted complete applications for consideration. The franchising of non-emergency ambulance transport services is a strategic step to ensure a couple of things. First, consistency and quality of care for patients who require scheduled medical transport, transportation, but do not necessarily need emergency intervention. Establish regulatory oversight to ensure all providers meet safety training and operational standards for companies operating within Durham County's jurisdiction. Equitable access to transportation for vulnerable populations, including those with mobility challenges, chronic conditions, or limited personal transportation options. And coordination with our 911 system and healthcare partners to reduce inappropriate use of emergency resources and improve system efficiency. By continuing and maintaining the franchise model, Durham County can better manage the availability, reliability, and accountability of non-emergency transport services, ultimately improving patient satisfaction and system sustainability. Today I share information about the four applicants who have submitted for franchise consideration. Durham County Office of Emergency Services EMS Division vetted these franchises, our franchise applications with consideration for submission being incompletion, evaluation and finding in favor of public convenience and necessity, and confirmation that each applicant meets the minimum requirements outlined in the, outlined for the award of a franchise under Durham County Ordinance, Chapter 12. This hearing is an opportunity for the public and the Board of Commissioners to learn more about each provider's qualifications, capabilities, and commitment to serving our community. Let me introduce and provide an initial overview of our applicants. Midwest Medical Transport, doing business as North State Medical Transport, provides 24/7 services with 16 ambulances and approximately 85 personnel, holding both basic and advanced life support credentials. They're based locally and we're joined by their regional manager, Carly Dodson, and Stone White, who's their operations manager. Priority Care, based in Raleigh, provides 24/7 services, Monday through Friday and 12-hour coverage on the weekends. They operate at basic and intermediate credential levels. They have 15 units with nearly 40 staff members and we're joined by William Smith, who's their COO. Providence Transportation, who's been in business since 2013, has been licensed by the State Office of EMS since 2020. They have operations in two regions in North Carolina, including locally, with 17 ambulances in their fleet. They provide basic and intermediate level care, Monday through Friday, and we are joined by David Stevens, who's their president, and Robin Robins, who's a local operations supervisor. Jan Care operates 24/7 in the region with a scalable shift model of 10 units of peak times and a combination of basic, intermediate, and advanced life support personnel. We're joined by Todd Cornet, who's their chief of operations, and Tristan Cornet, who's their assistant chief of operations. As mentioned, after a thorough review by both EMS and risk management, we have determined that these four applicants meet the requirements for the award of franchise under Durham County Ordinance, Chapter 12. Subject to tonight's public hearing and the board's discretion, we recommend that the board grant the application for franchise in accordance with the ordinance for a two-year term. With that, I yield the floor for questions and review of each applicant.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so I appreciate that, that presentation and your recommendations. I will now open the public hearing on the four ambulance franchise applicant, applications. So the applicants can come speak about their, if they'd like, if they'd like to present briefly, then we will allow the board to ask questions. Then I'll close the, well, we'll have public comment on this and I'll close and we'll deliberate. So if the organizations would like to come forward, Jan Care, Midwest Medical, Priority Care, and Providence, if they'd like to say a few words about their programs, their offerings within this public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Carly Dodson and I'm representing Midwest Medical Transport and as doing business as North State Medical Transport. I actually stood here nine years ago when we were originally franchised in Durham County under EMS Director Skip Kirkwood. In those nine years, we have serviced Duke University as well as Duke Hospice and various nursing homes and dialysis centers in Durham County. While we have a breakdown of about 75% BLS service in Durham County and 25% ALS service, we do operate 24 hours a day and we are able to assist Durham County whenever necessary. In our nine years, we have not had any formal complaints brought forth to EMS nor the Commissioners regarding our service and we look forward to a continued partnership with Durham County and to grow with the county's needs. So of course, if you have any questions, more than happy to answer them or I can wait till later.
Okay, well, that'll be a little bit later. So if you could stay there, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
It's been a long time. We've been trying to get in with Durham County for some years. So it's pretty good to be here. Feels good. We just hope to add to what we believe would be the excellent service that you're already getting, hopefully from the individuals that are already in your county. We're growing pretty quick. This year we've gone A, we're hoping to go paramedic level very shortly. Hopefully that'll help you guys out, but at this point, we're just happy to be here. Do anything we can do to help you out. All right?
And who are you, and who are you with, sir? I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. William Smith.
With?
Priority Care Ambulance.
Priority Care.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's Todd Cornet. I'm with Jan Care Ambulance. We've been in the area since roughly 2017. Since then, we've been the primary provider for all three of Duke Hospitals. So we do Duke Maine, Duke Regional, and Duke Raleigh. We do about 12,000 transports a year out of those facilities, most of those being BLS, around 90%, and then we do assist Duke Life Flight with ALS calls as well. We also do nursing home calls and then also calls from residential. This will be our, I guess, our third franchise that we're seeking here, so we're excited to keep going. As I mentioned, we also provide mutual aid to Durham County when they need us and yeah, just excited to continue the relationship with Durham County.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dave Stevens with Providence Transportation. Providence Transportation has been in business since 2013 and we've been a licensed EMS provider in North Carolina since 2020. We have 17 ambulances in our fleet. We have two locations in the state. Our main headquarters is in Davidson County, just south of Winston-Salem, and then we have a secondary location in the Triangle area that opened in 2024. We have currently four units in this area and as we've grown, we've, we've added to that and will continue to add that as the need presents itself. We currently have franchises in Wake, Orange, and Johnston County, and so we're just excited to add Durham to the mix and be, be a provider that can assist the community here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board for our applicants? Okay, thank you all very much. Next, we'll accept public, public comments, non-applicant, public comments from members of the public who wish to comment on any of the franchise applicants. Ms. Peterson, yes?
I'm here to speak. How many minutes do I have?
Two minutes.
Okay. Is the, so the clock is, oh, the clock is here. Great. Thank you, thank you. I'm Mrs. Peterson. One of the questions, just sort of, just listening, the various companies that have shown up, are they racially diverse? I didn't hear how many employees they have. I would like to know how many women are working with the companies. I would also like to know a little bit exactly, are you saying that you're taking place of the emergency folks that come to persons' homes? Are these separate companies that's going to be doing this because our local emergency people just don't have enough space, enough people, enough employees? So I think for me, also is the dollar amount, what, the dollar amount of the contract and how long is the contract? But I think overall, I would like to know, Durham has a very, very high African-American community, so I would like to know how many African-Americans already working for some of the companies, how many women, and also what is the dollar amount of the contract?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson.
And can each company answer that, please?
Well, I'll let you, Chief, I'll let you, Kamansky, I'll let you speak to that, speak to what you can, and then I'll see if we can, if, if those are questions that we can have the applicants answer.
Sure. So as far as the operations go, the, the process for the non-emergency transport companies are purely that, non-emergency transport. So they, they are relied upon for our nursing homes, assisted living facilities, the hospitals, and they're used for, mostly for discharges from the hospitals to return home to the assisted living facilities and nursing homes, or transfer to a doctor's appointment or to the hospital for a scheduled medical appointment. So, so it is non-competition with the emergency services of Durham County. And so by having these franchise companies, it takes the burden off of the emergency service resources. It allows for the emergency responses to 911 to be unencumbered by the discharges and so on. Further, it helps us with the hospital loads to be able to discharge from the hospitals, to open up beds on the floors, to allow for the ER admissions to move upstairs, and ultimately create quicker turnaround times for the 911 ambulances in the field. As far as demographics, I don't have that information for each company as part of the process for the evaluation of the, of the franchise. It is not a contract and so we are not paying for any of the services. Everything has gone, is gone through medical billing as, from each person through the company directly. So it has nothing to do with a contract or, or services rendered to the county.
Good, thank you. And I will ask the applicants to come to answer, how many employees do you have? And if it's diverse, we, you can provide the diversity later in letter.
Um, yes, while I don't have all the specifics, I will say we have 95 field employees. And again, I will report back to Seth regarding our breakdown or whatever is specifically requested. I might need that one more time though, just to expand.
It's really the, the gender and gender diversity and race diversity as well.
Yes, so I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, so I'll have to report that back to Seth or at the next hearing.
Thank you.
At Priority Care Ambulance, we service Wake County, Johnston County, Orange County. We have approximately 55 employees, half of that amount would be female, the other half are male. A large portion of it is, it's a really good mix. We have everything from African-Americans, Caucasians, we have numerous Asians, we have many young individuals, the majority of the staff is under the age of 25. Most of them are in school, it'd be PAs or doctors. So we have a little mix of everything. We service not just hospitals, we service nursing homes, we take loved ones to their final resting. We take loved ones to their final resting places. We do everything from organ transplants, a little bit of everything. It's a mix of all, but these are really, really good, smart, educated youth that we employ. I'm very proud to be a part of it. If you have any questions, though, I'd be more than happy to answer anything else if I missed something.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm Todd Cornet with Jan Care again. We staff roughly sixty-five to seventy at any given time in Durham County. I'd say about forty-three percent of those are females. Again, I don't have specific numbers on race or ethnicity. I know that we do have a very diverse workforce. As he mentioned, we have a wide variety of age. We have anyone from eighteen years old, all the way up to, we have a girl that just turned seventy. So like I said, wide, diverse in age, but as far as specific numbers, I would have to get back with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Dave Stevens with Providence Transportation. We have approximately a hundred employees. We have two divisions in our company. We have a non-emergency wheelchair transport division and an ambulance division. So that number is both of those divisions combined. We do not discriminate in the hiring process. We have a wide, diverse population within our employees. I do not have specifics to that, but I'd be happy to provide what I can.
Thank you. I will now hear no further public comments. I'll close the public hearing and the board can deliberate. Are there any discussion? Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes, thank you so much for the work that everyone has done to vet all of the proposals and the franchises. I want to thank all of the different companies for wanting to do business in Durham County. You know, the more franchises we have, the better because it actually gives people choice and it makes sure that we have the service available to our residents and to service all the different facilities. And as was mentioned, it helps to take some of the burden off of our EMS staff. So I'm thrilled that we have four different groups who want to serve our residents in Durham. So, and I just wanted to clarify with the county attorney, can we make a motion that includes all four franchises or we have to do four separate motions?
Yes, the preference is to do separate.
Separate, okay, thank you.
That's correct. Any other comments from the board deliberation?
Chair, I didn't ask the question at the time, but I was wondering, these services are for non-emergent sort of situations. And I heard one of the applicants say that they were in a position to add or certify paramedics. What is the situation if a non-emergent situation becomes an emergent one en route, say, to a facility? How does that handle under this arrangement?
The paramedics who are working on non-emergency transport companies answer to their own medical director. Often, it's more about the scope of practice. And so the paramedics are able to take a discharge, excuse me, from a hospital that may have a medication drip or a pump or some other higher level of care that is being discharged potentially to a rehab facility that an EMT or an intermediate would not be able to take. And so that's the advantage of having paramedics on some of these transfer companies.
I just thought that would be something important for the public to know.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, so we have to, in order to approve or deny, we have to have separate motions for each one. And so, does anyone else have the verbiage or I can read it out? You all got it? All right, so let's start, we'll start with Jan Care. And I'll accept that, the motion read, now the Commissioner Burton.
I move that we grant an ambulance franchise to Jan Care, make sure I'm reading it right, Jan Care Ambulance of McDowell County, Inc. And find that the public convenience and necessity required to provide service based on the information presented in the application, staff review, and the public hearing, the franchise will be effective upon the execution of a franchise agreement and is subject to continued compliance with all county requirements.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. The first motion carries unanimously. I'll open the floor for a second motion and this one will be for Midwest Medical, DBA, North State.
I move that we grant an ambulance franchise to Midwest Medical Transport LLC Company operating as North State Medical Transport and find that the public convenience and necessity require the proposed service based on the information presented in the application, staff review, and the public hearing. The franchise will be effective upon the execution of a franchise agreement and is subject to continued compliance with all county requirements.
Second.
Our motion on the floor has been properly stated and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. We'll accept, I'll open the floor for another motion for Priority Care.
Dr. Chair, by, Chair Dr. Lee, I would like to make a motion. I would, I move that we grant an ambulance franchise to Priority Care and find that public convenience and necessity require the proposed services, service based on the information presented in the application, staff review, and the public hearing, the franchise will be effective upon the execution of a franchise agreement and is subject to continued compliance with all county requirements.
Second.
All right, our motion on the floor has been properly stated and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. The motion passes unanimously. And our last motion for this public hearing is for Providence.
I move that we grant an ambulance franchise to Providence Transportation, Inc. And find the public convenience and necessity require the proposed service based on the information presented in the application, staff review, and the public hearing. The franchise will be effective upon the execution of a franchise agreement and is subject to continued compliance with all county requirements.
Second.
Our motion has been properly stated and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Our motion passes unanimously. And that will conclude this public hearing. For this, congratulations to our new franchisees. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you all. Thank you. And thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Our second public hearing for today is a public hearing to consider a performance-based award for Project Speedy with Aspida Financial Services.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Filter. I am the Economic Development Manager for Durham County. Tonight, we have two impressive projects that we are thrilled to present to you. Each is going to have their own public hearing, as the chair mentioned. One for Aspida Financial Services LLC, our first one, and then the second one for Novartis Gene Therapies, Inc. So I will proceed with Project Speedy, which is a performance-based award for Project Speedy with Aspida Financial Services LLC. The board is requested to hold a public hearing to consider a performance-based award for Project Speedy with Aspida Financial Services. We'll just refer to them as Aspida this evening, in a not-to-exceed amount of $750,000 and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute a performance agreement for the award. This new office headquarters project will create approximately 1,000 new jobs and invest $28.75 million over a five-year period here in Durham County. The performance-based award will be funded by new tax revenue generated by Project Speedy. The award pays for itself and the revenue would not exist except for Project Speedy. All payments to the project will adhere to the Durham County Business Recruitment and Expansion Policy and will occur only following annual performance verification that the company has met its job creation, investment, and community partnership targets. This includes maintaining that property taxes are paid annually at a minimum twice the scheduled amount. Founded in 2020 and based in Durham, Aspida is a fast-growing financial services company. They provide a suite of annuity products that help people achieve and protect their financial futures as well as offer reinsurance solutions for insurance companies. Their new Durham headquarters will support the continued growth of their technology, service, and operation teams and will serve as a central global hub for their business as they expand. A headquarters of this size and scale will help continue to burnish Durham County as a signature location for office and financial sector investment. The project also offers a variety of entry-level positions. With approval of this award, the company has agreed to make good faith efforts to offer annual internship to a student at either Durham Tech or North Carolina Central, participate in two annual Durham Public Schools CTE programs, participate in two Durham job fairs annually, and offer a minimum of one annual financial literacy event targeted at Durham students. You can find additional project details in the briefing sheet. The staff recommend approval of this award. The public hearing has been advertised as required by law. We do have company representatives here this evening to share some brief remarks alongside several of our other partners. I'll just share their names and titles and companies here for a moment. We have Sandy Ball, the Chief People Officer at Aspida. She's here with Brian Clark Call, their Vice President of Marketing and Communications, and Anna Layden, Associate Vice President of Pricing. We also have Darian Harris with Durham Public Schools, the Director of Career and Technical Education. And we also have Dom Cole Johnson, the Chair of the Greater Durham Chamber of Commerce Board. So I'll defer to the chair on whether you'd like questions or have them speak.
I will, thank you so much for that, Mr. Filter. I will now officially open the public hearing after that and I will invite the representatives to come forward and present what they may or speak on what they would like to about this opportunity. And while they're coming up, I will say those of you following along will notice that I actually skipped. I'm out of order. Like, I skipped an item. We'll go back to the public hearing for the previous one in just a moment. But since Mr. Filter kept up with me, we'll stay with this one here and we'll invite the staff from Aspida and DPS and so forth, or whoever would like to speak, to make a few comments within this public hearing.
Awesome. Well, hi, I'm Sandy Ball. Really excited to potentially have this go through because we were born in Durham and we'd like to stay in Durham and grow. Wanted to give you a little bit, I think you heard a little bit about Aspida, founded in 2020. Aspida is the Greek word for shield and so we are in the business of protecting dreams, so it kind of aligns there. We have built a platform for prepping people for retirement and we've grown to 27 billion in assets over five years. So really proud of our growth. Some other just brag points while I have the podium is we really believe in speed, simplicity, and service. So if you think about an annuity or an insurance product, most of our, in the industry, is very slow. We can issue a contract in five seconds. And so we're proud of that. We differentiate with technology. We have videos that kids do on our products because we like to make them simple and we like people to understand what they're purchasing. We also have best-in-class service from our net promoter scores. So we're really proud of a lot of the things we've accomplished over five years and really looking forward to continuing to do that. Just in terms of like the success we have, we get to put back in the community and I think that's where we've made a big impact. We live down the street from Kestrel Heights, which is a charter school. We've worked with them for two years, really full cycle, doing everything, time, energy, and resources with them. We have about 200 employees that work here in Durham and eighty percent of those are millennial or Gen Z. So we are very much recruiting early career talent. We focus a lot with the colleges and universities around us. We partner with them. I always say people don't grow up and say, I want to be in insurance, right? You have to fall into it or learn it. And so we do it, we really try and educate people on the careers that they can find in the insurance industry and take a lot of pride in partnering with colleges and universities to do that. We also offer two volunteer days off so that people can volunteer in the community for things they really like to volunteer for versus some of the things that we sponsor. So again, just thank you, excited to be here, excited to forge some of the new partnerships as part of this and you know, we're just excited to be here and to grow. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, sure, please.
Good evening. This is really exciting. Thank you guys so much. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Darian Harris. I am proud to serve as Director of Career and Technical Education for Durham Public Schools. I'm here tonight to express my support for Aspida's expansion into Durham County and highlight this incredible impact this partnership will have on our students and the future workforce. Aspida's commitment to partnering with Durham Public Schools Career and Technical Education, or CTE, program is a tremendous opportunity for us. By engaging and guest speaking, hosting teachers and students, and serving as an advisor for our CT programs, they will provide our students with exposure to careers in the financial services industry. These partnerships will create industry awareness and help students see the wealth of career opportunities available right here in Durham. Aspida's efforts also extend beyond K-12 education as they plan to offer internships and participate in job fairs at Durham Technical Community College and North Carolina Central University. This ensures that students at every stage of their educational journey have access to meaningful opportunities to prepare for their futures. Also, Aspida's commitment to financial literacy is a major benefit for our high school and college students. By hosting financial literacy sessions, they will empower young people with the skills they need to make informed financial decisions. This investment in Durham brings quality jobs to the community and their plans to hire 1,000 employees include positions with competitive pay benefits and clear pathways for advancement. Many of these roles, such as customer service, customer support positions, will provide accessible entry points for our students, allowing them to grow their careers and achieve success right here in their community. Lastly, I want to thank Aspida for their investment in our students, our schools, and our community. Their partnership aligns perfectly with our mission to prepare students for success in college careers and life by educating and empowering every student to innovate, serve, and lead. I also want to thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting initiatives like this that connect education, workforce development, and economic growth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions from? Oh, we still have. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Chairman Lee.
Good morning.
And the county commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am Dom Cole Johnson. I am the Chair of the Greater Durham Chamber and we are pleased to have this agenda item before you today. Matt Gladett, our VP of Economic Development, worked with Matt Filler and Andy Miracle to the land, the company in Durham, and is very active and recruit them elsewhere. Aspida is a homegrown company that has already demonstrated commitment to their local Durham Public Schools and treat their employees well. We are grateful to have them chosen to expand in Durham and thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments?
Those are all from our side.
Okay. Are there any questions from our board before we ask for public input? Okay. The next section of the public hearing is for public comments on this particular item. Okay, no public comments. I will officially close this public hearing and for deliberation of our board. Okay, public hearing is closed. Any deliberation? Any questions, conversation? Commissioner Burton?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lee. I'm really liking the fact that Aspida is going to help with financial literacy with our secondary students. I think this is something that I think this is something that is needed for many of our students in middle and high schools, so I'm looking forward to that and really being a partner with Career and Technical Education within Durham Public Schools. I think that's exciting and you know, just being a really good community partner here in Durham. So that's really all I have to say. I think that this is a good thing for Durham County, so thank you so much.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I'm really thrilled about both of the jobs announcements today. It has been actually quite a while, almost a year, I believe, that we have had the opportunity to announce not only new jobs but additional investments in our tax base. And so I just feel really grateful to everyone who has been a part of helping us get to this point, and it takes a lot of people. We can see some of them reflected here today from our own staff, the Chamber, Durham Public Schools, and the DPS Foundation. I want to acknowledge the Chair who's here tonight, I mean, the Chair, the Director, Breonna Kennedy. I think that's, to me, is what's most, one of the most valuable things here is the relationships and the partnerships. Darian, it's great to have you here as well, and also people, Chief People Officer, I love that, Sandy Ball, and to hear more about the company, because I think that's what our board really wants to see, is those connections between our schools and our students moving into good-paying jobs where they can have a good quality of life and stay here in Durham. So you know, this is going to be 1,000 jobs. That is just incredible. And also, it's really, this is your national headquarters, so you're investing in Durham, and also it's, to me, another opportunity to expand our different sectors, job sectors, so having you know, the financial sector growing. So I am very excited about this and look forward to seeing what comes out of it, especially related to Durham Public Schools. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Long?
I just wanted to add on in my thanks for Aspida for choosing Durham, but also want to thank Matthew Filter and Andy Miracle from our Durham County team for bringing this opportunity to us. And the work that you guys do behind the scenes, like we're here, we're getting to celebrate this opportunity, but it also took months and months and months of work that our county team put in, so I really appreciate that. And I just want to highlight and recognize, I think this is the first time since I've been on the board that we've actually had someone from DPS here as we approved one of these projects, and I think that's really special. Then I love that it's showcasing you know, Aspida's commitment to our Durham Public Students, and I think it's a really great model to be able to set for you know, future companies and investments that folks are looking to make, to have that strong partnership and to have it showcased here today with Mr. Harris speaking. So thank you so much to all of you for this opportunity.
All right. Hearing no further deliberative comments from the board. I'll accept the motion to award the performance-based, to award the performance-based award for Project Speedy with Aspida Financial Services.
So moved.
Second.
Our movement, our movement properly stated and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes please, shoot at the same time. Passage unanimous, congratulations and welcome. Our third public hearing is very similar to previous, and this is the one I skipped over here. It's a public hearing to consider a performance-based award for projects Arrowwood and Red Cedar with Novartis Gene Therapies. Mr. Filter?
Thank you. The board is requested to hold a third public hearing this evening, the second from Economic Development, to consider a performance-based award for projects Arrowwood and Red Cedar. I'll probably just say Arrowwood to make it easier, but they're kind of complementary projects, and that's with Novartis Gene Therapies, Inc., I'll just say Novartis, in a not-to-exceed amount of $5.5 million, and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute a performance agreement for the award. These new manufacturing projects in total will create 280 new jobs and invest $540 million over a five-year period here in Durham County. The performance-based award will be funded by new tax revenue generated by the projects. The award pays for itself, and the revenue would not exist but for these projects here in Durham. All payments for the project will adhere to the Durham County Business Recruitment and Expansion Policy and will only occur following an annual performance verification that the company's met its job creation, investment, and community partnership targets. This includes maintaining that property taxes are paid at twice the minimum scheduled payment. Novartis currently employs over 300 people in Durham County today for the development and production of gene therapies for patients and families devastated by rare and life-threatening neurological genetic diseases. This expansion here in Durham will allow Novartis to manufacture medicines across a variety of therapeutic areas. The facilities in Durham will include advanced biologics manufacturing as well as filling and packaging capabilities for biologics. An additional project is also planned for Wake County. Manufacturing is a top priority for Durham County. Approximately 200 of the new jobs, or 71%, are open to only the, to those with a high school diploma or a two-year degree paying an average wage of $104,000. So that's 71% of the jobs open to those only with a high school diploma or two-year degree. Additionally, with the approval of this award, the company's agreed to make a good faith effort to donate $35,000 annually to the DPS Foundation for the payment period of the award, participate in two annual DPS CTE programs, donate approximately $100,000 in equipment to Durham Tech, and participate in two Durham job fairs annually. Just to note also, the company offers a robust benefit package to its employees, including 14 weeks of paid parental leave, $5,000 adoption expense reimbursement, and up to $1,000 for childcare or elder care expenses. Staff recommends approval of this award. This public hearing has also been noticed by, as required by law. We have several company representatives and other partners here to speak in support of the project as well. We've kind of divided up some of the community partners between these two public hearings to just make it easier. First up, we're going to have Matt Lowell. He's a principal at Ryan. It's a site selection firm that assisted Novartis. And we'll have someone from Novartis, Associate Director of Government Affairs, John Hohenwater. We'll have Jerry Jones from Durham Tech, Breonna Kennedy from the DPS Schools Foundation, DPS Foundation, and then Matt Gladick, who's our, just our really close partner at every step of the process here. He'll close this out. He's the Vice President at the Greater Durham Chamber of Commerce. So if those folks want to come up and, if it's appropriate, and make a few short remarks, I'd...
That's correct. So I will officially open the public meeting now and allow for those interested parties to come speak and present on this particular topic.
Good evening. I'm Matt Lowell with Ryan. We worked with Novartis through their process to evaluate Durham for this project. We had quite a few Matts on this project, three of us here tonight. Not typical. But as the other Matt said, Novartis is doubling down on its footprint here in Durham. Really excited to increase the headcount and make this major investment in Durham County. With the, this investment would not be possible without the workforce that is here in Durham, and the foundation that this county has in life sciences is second to none. And so as part of that, the company is committing to, as Matt said, partnering with DTCC, Durham Public Schools, and CCU with their programs, and to recruit from those agencies to help increase their workforce that they're putting in Durham County. And turn it over to Sean. And before I step down, I just wanted to thank the county staff, Matt, Andy, Matt Gladick. Team's been great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm John Hohenwater with Global Public Affairs at Novartis. So I'm excited to be here tonight. This is a result of an announcement that we did earlier this year, where Novartis is going to be investing $23 billion here in the United States for a number of things, including onshore manufacturing. And we are looking at a lot of states from across the country, and I was so excited when we landed here in Durham because right down the road, we have one of our flagship facilities, which was mentioned earlier, which is our gene therapy, just a few miles away. So a lot of work went into this. The staff did a great job. You know, we're excited to continue this partnership and excited really to continue in furthering, expanding, reimagining medicine. And that's what we say, our dream is at Novartis, is reimagining medicine, and we're just so happy that this is a partnership that's going to continue. So thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Jerry Jones. I apologize for my voice. I'm trying to get over a cold. And I'm the Executive Director for the Center for Workforce Engagement at Durham Technical Community College. Unfortunately, our President, JB Butston, couldn't be here because he's out of town on another previous engagement, but we're excited about this partnership and the expansion of Novartis and what they're doing. It is perfect timing for us at Durham Tech because we're getting ready to break ground on our new facility, our new life science facility. And so to have their expansion happen to take place with the promise of 280 jobs, 200 of those being, again, for individuals that don't necessarily have to have a four-year degree but a two-year degree and/or recognized industry certifications, it's just phenomenal to us. It also boosts our Bulls program. Unfortunately, because of the weather, we did not have them here, our students and our faculty, to present, but hopefully next time you will here, and you already know that great things are happening there. It's making a major difference in individual lives. So we are excited also with the continuing partnership with other entities and organizations that are part of making this happening, happen, like NC Works and our, again, Durham Public School Systems, and what all that means and how we can create opportunities for our Durham residents, real opportunities, not just jobs, but careers with pathways with real hope for advancement. And so we just want you to know from Durham Tech perspective, we fully support this particular organization and what they're doing. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I'm Breonna Kennedy, Interim Executive Director at Durham Public Schools Foundation, here to offer our support for this award from the county. Durham Public Schools Foundation is an independent nonprofit here in Durham that harnesses this community's resources in order to invest them in strengthening our teachers, supporting our students, and empowering families. Over the last three years, we've developed a partnership with Novartis and look forward to seeing their sustained investment of their time, talents, and treasures into our public school ecosystem in the years ahead. Their commitment to our public school students in and out of the classroom has already shown promise, and by having increased career prospects for students in the life sciences field is sure to fuel more opportunities. I'm especially excited for the ability for a DPS grad to receive their diploma at one of our high schools and walk right into a career that will provide them with a thriving wage, thus allowing them to start and maintain their own lives right here in Durham. Thank you all so much, and thank you.
Chairman Lee and Commission members, I'm Matt Gladick with the Vice President of Economic Development for the Durham Chamber. I would like to thank you for taking up this item tonight. This is a project that is bringing life-changing salaries to people without needing a four-year degree. We're very excited for that opportunity. I wanted to take the time to thank Matt Filter and Andy Miracle for working on this project, as well as many city and staff people that aren't here in terms of the City and County Planning Department. Without their responses to this project on a very rapid timescale, we would not have the opportunity to be here tonight. So thank you for all the staff behind the scenes that have made this possible today. Thank you for taking this up.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Are there, within the confines of this public meeting, are there any questions for the staff directly for our, from our board? Board members? Okay. And now we'll accept public comment specifically for this item here.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Peterson?
Yes. Two or three minutes?
Do you have to sign up in advance for this? You will have had to, I've been made aware, you will have had to sign up for a public meeting, public comment. I noted you signed up for a different item later on, so that's correct.
Give me a piece of paper and I'll sign it real quick, please, sir. You usually do, when the public meetings are open, if their, if their person's here...
Okay, we'll do it. You have two minutes.
Thank you.
Specifically about this, this contract?
Yes. I actually have quite a few questions about this. How many of the county commissioners have visited this site? How many, how many of the county commissioners have visited this site? My understanding that this company is already in business here in the county. Am I correct on that? Just one county commissioner? Okay. How many employees does the company already have in Durham? And is those, is the company diverse?
This information is already, it's already available.
I'm sorry?
This information is already available. Do you have a question for the staff?
Yes, yes. Those are questions that I have, that I'm hoping that maybe the county commissioners can share with us, since they have not brought any of the employees here so that we can see. I think it is very, very important nowadays that, yes, we have a lot of companies that want to come to Durham, but we have to make sure that they are delivering what they say that they're going to deliver. Now, my understanding, about 100 and some young folks will be hired, will be making at least a little bit over 100 and some thousand dollars, and they do not have to have a college degree. That's great, and that's good. But what is happening now with the company? How many Durham residents now work for this company? How many of them already or have not finished college or at high school? And how many of them are already making over 100 and some thousand dollars? My last question, Dr. Lee, first thing, congratulations on your position. How many, who will be watching and managing these new projects that the county's going to be signing off on to make sure when it's all said and done, six months from now, a year from now, these companies have delivered?
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Peterson, already. I think we can speak to the oversight. Mr. Filter, would you, how we keep track of what the performance metrics and so forth?
Yes, the, any award for this...
We need the microphone. Microphone on.
Thank you. There we go.
Any such award is a 10-year contract, an agreement with Durham County. Each company applies to, Novartis applies to other companies as well, submit an annual performance verification packet that they have hired the target number of folks, that they have paid the wages that exceed the living wage here in Durham County, that they fulfill their community partnership commitments, and they submit financial summaries as to the capital investment. We also are able to check that on the tax rules as well because we would assess that as either real, real property or business personal property tax. So there's pretty aggressive oversight for 10 years of this agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Ms. Peterson, your questions about monitoring is something that we do as Matt shares. Ms. Peterson, your questions about monitoring is something that we do, as Matt shared. There are clawback provisions, so if a company does not meet those targets, we can clawback the dollars that we've allocated. And so it's one of those investments that we watch carefully. We've been very fortunate with the due diligence that's happened over the years in that the companies that have partnered with us and often through the state, they've met those goals. And so we're excited about this opportunity and that Durham remains a competitive region and that companies are attracted because it does translate to upward mobility for many of our residents that often would not have a chance. So we'll give you additional information on the questions that you asked that we couldn't readily answer. Thank you.
Okay. I will close the public hearing for this item. Deliberation, any further conversation from our board? Commissioner Burton?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lee. I just want to say that, again, just like with A Spida, I'm really excited about Novartis doing the work within Durham Public Schools, Durham Tech. I'm really excited about your commitment to the DPS Foundation. I was a founding board member for the DPS Foundation. When these items come to us, one of the things that I know as a commissioner and the rest of us really put an emphasis on, making sure companies are good community partners, that they just don't come to Durham, that they are working with our schools, with other nonprofits, they're giving back. And so I'm, I'm excited about your expansion. I'm excited about the work that you're going to do with our students as a former educator. And yes, we will hold you accountable. Okay? So thank you so much. This is really exciting.
Any further comments? Commissioner, Vice Chair Alom?
I just want to join and echo the sentiments and comments shared by Commissioner Burton. Thank you all so much for, you know, choosing to expand here in Durham County. And also want to once again thank our amazing Durham County team of Andy Miracle and Matthew Filter. And of course, we have Matt Lattick here from the chamber, because these opportunities really wouldn't be coming to Durham if we didn't have y'all advocating for, not just the county, but for the workforce that we have here in Durham, and advocating for our students and folks who are in continued education opportunities or job transition. So thank you so much for making sure that they're at the forefront of these conversations and bringing the values that all of us as commissioners care about to the companies that are looking to expand their campuses or bring new investments here. And thank you as well also to Novartis for choosing Durham to begin with and expanding here. Thank you.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, Novartis, thank you for choosing Durham County. We're excited to have you here. And if I can sort of reiterate some of the comments that's already been made about the level of partnerships that have shown up here this evening to support your involvement here in the community is sort of refreshing in many regards, and I think it speaks to the hard work of Mr. Filter and Mr. Miracle. People probably can't appreciate the level of work that you do behind the scenes to bring companies here to Durham. And so let me publicly just say thank you for the heavy lift that it is to get you here. And with respect to the public comments that were made, I'm also looking forward to a shared prosperity across our community as a result of your presence here. And so lastly, surely not lost on any of the commissioners here, that we look forward to the tax, tax revenues. Thank you.
Okay. So, Commissioner Jacobs, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Again, this is a great moment, another incredible opportunity for the members of our community. I remember the groundbreaking for Novartis years ago, and I know we're going to be at another event this week. And what really, really stands out to me were the stories of the people's lives who have been impacted by what Novartis does, the gene therapies. And I think we have to remember that the work that this company is doing is saving lives and, and helping families. And I know we'll probably hear stories later on this week, but I think it's really important that these are not just good-paying manufacturing jobs, but they're also meaningful jobs for people in our community, good-paying jobs that are making a difference in people's lives. I think it's worth repeating what is really truly astounding, that 200 of the, let's see, the overall job number is 280, but so 271% are eligible for people who just have a high school or a associate's degree. I think what's important is that the people who do, one of the important certifications is the BioWorks Manufacturing Certification. And I'm really proud of the system that we've been building, that the county has been supporting, as was acknowledged tonight. Mr. Jones was talking about the, the BioWorks Certification Program at Durham Tech, the Life Sciences Building that Durham County has, is funding, and the Bull's Academy Program that we've been supporting that creates a pipeline for a lot of our disconnected young people and a lot of our, you know, youth of color to have a pipeline into these jobs. And now there's a new program at Southern High School, brand-new CTE program that is going to be offering this BioWorks same, the same certification. So we're really building up the system. And, you know, our, our trip to Austin, the city, intercity trip, we saw that we went to visit a community college program where they're trying to compete with Durham. They're creating a life science program. So we, we have to keep upping our game and making sure that we have the talented workforce that has companies coming. And to the comment about, how do we know if Durham residents are getting these jobs? Well, we can't require that. But what we can do is to create the ecosystem and the conditions so that Durham residents are the ones who are educated and connected to these jobs. And that's what we are trying to do here, and that's what we're invested in. So again, this is a great moment, and thank everyone who's made it possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Just between these two opportunities, almost 1,300 jobs right here in Durham County. That is exciting. Okay. So we're gonna, I'll accept a motion for us to approve the Performance Base Awards, Award for Project Arrowood and Red Cedar with Novartis Gene Therapies in a not-to-exceed amount of 5.5 million, and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute a performance agreement for the award.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
We have a motion that's, oop, I'm sorry.
Second?
We have a motion that's been properly stated and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Now, I have to make it, I need to ask for an amended motion for our prior action approving the award for A Spida Financial Services to include authorization for the county manager to negotiate and execute the performance agreement and any related documents necessary to effectuate the board's approval of the award.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, please use the same sign. That amendment has passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So we need, we're gonna take a, take a picture, yes. That's correct. Okay. All right. Yes. Yes. Alrighty. The next item on our agenda is the Boards and Commissions. I'll turn it over to Attorney Williamson.
Alright, good evening. So we have four vacant positions. Thank you. We have, wait a minute, let me just...
While she calculates that. I'm sorry. Boards and Commissions. Okay.
Alright, we have four vacant positions for the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission. We have three at-large and one mangum township position. For the three at-large positions, the Board has selected Stephen Ardebain, Deborah Lukin, and Steve Cohn. For the one mangum township position, the Board has selected, oh, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. For the three at-large positions, the Board has selected Stephen Ardebain, Jeffrey Phillip, and Steve Cohn. For the one mangum township position, the Board has selected Deborah Lukin. And we have one vacant position for the Farmland Protection Advisory Board, and the Board has selected Talmage Leighton. Congratulations to all who have been selected.
Alrighty, congratulations to all. Thank you for your willingness to serve. These Boards and Commissions are extremely important in the activities of Durham County. So, we really appreciate you. If you were not selected, please continue to apply. There's plenty of things for us to do, for you to do. The next item on our agenda are the items that are pulled from the Consent Agenda. And so we had two. We had the 25-0554, because we had a public comment, and then we had 25-0601. Just because of the order, we'll do the 25-0554. We have one public comment for that. And again, this was the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 26 BCC 23 to recognize $369,949 of Year Four Funds to support Grant Award to the Office of Emergency Services EMS Division from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and to authorize the county manager to sign and execute all contracts for authorized and approved uses associated with the grant program throughout the grant's period of performance. We had a public comment, Victoria Peterson, on this topic. If you could come over to... And for the nature of this, the Consent Agenda item, public comment is specifically about this particular topic. And you have three minutes.
Oh, great, Dr. Lee. I get a little bit more time, and thank you, thank you. Here, if you notice, one of the groups and organizations that will be receiving funds is the Mental Health Service. Listen. We have a crisis that's going on in Durham right now, today. If you go on Fayetteville Street, on the corner of Fayetteville and Umstead, across the street from Stanford Warren Library, we have numerous people living out on the streets and on church property. Around the corner, you had a huge group of people. During the summertime, okay, but during the wintertime, you have fires? These folks are literally, they're literally starting fires on private property. That's a church on that corner. And the other day, they had started a fire on the, uh, the street in front of that church. Look. I hate to say this, I do not mean to be emotional, but we have African Americans who are sitting on the city council. We have African Americans who are county commissioners. We have African Americans who have high positions in this community. We need some help here to get this problem, Dr. Lee, under control. We have too many of our people living on the streets. One and two and three o'clock at night, they're out there with a fire, fires being burnt. The fire trucks are having to constantly come. The city police, I just was talking to the sheriff about this crisis. This is a crisis that is going on in Durham. So my question also, these funds for the mental health, are they here? Do we have a representative from this organization that's gonna be getting any dollars? Because the city has a program called The Heart, where they're supposed to be coming out and working with these folks. Well, there's something wrong if people are out in the cold of the night burning fires, and we're just driving by like nothing is going on here. And many of these individuals, and I have stopped Dr. Lee and spoken to them, many of them look like me. They look like you, Dr. Lee. We've got to do something. We have a crisis right now, today. And I'm just asking the county commissioners, what are these dollars gonna be being used for? And are they going to be partnering with The Heart? Because that's the program that the city has that's supposed to be working with persons in Durham that have mental health issues, Dr. Lee.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Peterson. I appreciate it. Alrighty, so... Are there any other comments about, from, from the Board about this particular item? Go ahead, Wendy.
Well, we have Helen Ladd here, who is the Director of this program. I think it's important to clarify that this is the fourth final year funding of a four-year SAMPA grant, and it's specifically for a wonderful program that our EMS runs for opioid response, overdose response. And Helen, you could speak very eloquently about this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, ma'am. The program that this funding will serve is the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction Recovery Act Grant, and it is geared to get naloxone, Narcan, into the community to help those who have opioid use disorders and to keep them from dying from overdose. We have, in the past year, been able to get over 3,000 naloxone kits into the community. We also, our Community Paramedic Program, I manage that program, along with getting naloxone into the community, we start treatment for opioid use disorder in the field and get people connected to services in the community. And so, the mental health that you saw was the SAMPA, was the Substance Abuse and Mental Health, it was SAMPA, who is actually the funder, they're not receiving funds, they're providing the funds. So that, that helps, hopefully that helps to clear that particular thing up. And yes, we do work with Heart. It's a wonderful program. They work specifically with the mental health side, we work with the substance use side. And they, many times in the work that they do, will find someone who needs additional services for their substance use, and they'll refer them to us. And we do the opposite. When we, when we have patients that can benefit from their expertise with mental health, we refer to them. So we work very closely with Heart in many ways. And so, we're very glad for that partnership. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I hope it at least starts to.
And Helen, I apologize for calling you. Not calling you Helen Tripp, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, so we'll accept a motion to approve the Budget Ordinance Amendment for number... For Bu- Bu- Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 26 BCC 023.
So moved.
Second. Oh, sorry. You go ahead.
Second.
We have a, a, a motion that's been properly stated and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda that has been moved, um, that time, the time for, uh, we could talk later, that, that time has been, has passed. The next item on our agenda that has been moved was the 25-0601, which is the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number BCC 038 to recognize $21,347 in community donations from Carolina Arbor's Community to the Durham County Sheriff's Office. Uh, we have two signed up. One was gonna be online. Is that person online? Okay. They're both here? I'm sorry. Alright, I know that we have Herman Spurling for comment. Yes. You can come to the line. Okay. Okay. Do we have a, a Kim Crossman? And, Ken, oh, yeah. Come on, yeah. Alrighty. Yes, I'm sorry, I just didn't recognize the name. I didn't recognize Ken's name, okay.
Well, when we meet, then.
Yes.
Anyway, I wasn't planning on speaking, but thank you for this opportunity. And the opportunity frankly to help support our sheriff and to be able to contribute, have our, help our community to contribute towards the purchase of, of, uh, I'll call it Deputy Dog. So, thank you very much. That's it. I hope it's representative of the people in Durham coming up to support all of the offices and all of the people that manage and protect us in Durham. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Alright.
I just concur with Herman. I hope we can continue this opportunity next year and possibly for EMS or some other worthy function of the county. Thank you again.
Alrighty. So then, since this was pulled off a consent, we'll have to approve it separately. And I'll just open it for a motion.
Mr. Chair, may, may I provide a few comments?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I apologize.
So let me, uh, say thank you to the Carolina Arbor's Community for coming together and supporting the Sheriff's K-9 Unit. I had an opportunity to be out in that community. I thought this was a rather unique sort of circumstance for the community to come together and show that they were in support of the Sheriff's Office. And so, uh, I want to say thank you for your community, or to your community.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobs?
I was gonna let Commissioner Valentine to make the motion.
Any other comment from the side? Okay.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. That brings us to the end of our agenda, which means we will need, we do have a closed session. That brings us to the end of our public agenda. We will need to go into closed session, sorry. To adjourn in a closed session, discuss matters related to location, expansion of industries, or other businesses in the area served by the public body including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered to public body in negotiations pursuant to Geno Statute 143-318911A4. That's a mo- that's a proposed motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, and we go into closed session for the reasons stated. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. We are in closed session.